Great, thank you for joining us. The Columbian Editorial Board is pleased to welcome candidates for Vancouver School Board, Position Three. I'm Greg Jane, I'm the Editorial Page Editor at the Columbian. I'll have the other editorial board members introduce themselves.
My name is Will Campbell, I'm the editor.
Hi, I'm Colin Keller, I'm the Assistant News Editor.
And as we mentioned before we are recording this, we will post it unedited on our website and our YouTube channel for the benefit of our readers. And now we'll move on to the candidates. Please take just one to two minutes, introduce yourselves, explain why you were running for this position, and then after that we'll get into specific policy questions. We'll start with Wendy.
Well, my name is Wendy Smith, and I am running for Position Three on the Vancouver School Board. I'm running to retain nine seats. I've been serving on the board since 2017. In addition to being a board director, I'm also a high school history and civics teacher in the Evergreen District. I just finally started my 22nd year teaching. I'm also the parent of two DPS students. I have a high schooler and a middle schooler in the district. And my middle schooler attends one of our alternative learning programs, which I'm really... I'm thankful, grateful that we live in a district that can support and those options for students. My son definitely is frightened because of it, so... And I'm a lifelong resident of Vancouver School District. I'm a product of the school district. I attended K-3 graduation Vancouver Schools. I made the very intentional decision to raise my family in the Vancouver School District. I love this district. I'm very proud of this district. I'm proud to serve the district, and I hope to continue to do so.
Great, thank you.
My name is Larry Rowan. I've lived in Vancouver for eight years. I went through a K-12 education in Bellingham, Washington. First five of those at Western Washington State College, where a lot of our teachers are trained. I was one of the guinea pigs, serving the teachers. And that was, for me, a very good exposure to the best that K-12 education can be. After finishing public school, I gone on to work in manufacturing organizations, moved around the country, lived east coast, west coast, southwest. And through all of that, our three children went through their education path. And now my grandchildren are starting on theirs. And as I look at the schools right now in Vancouver, I see what five challenges. There's certainly a lot of changes going on, and much of what the Vancouver School District does, I think, is very commendable, excellent, deepened. But there are things that I think need to be changed. So I'm not specifically running against Wendy. I'm asking for change. And in that light, I'm saying, offer deserved. The current board has its oldest member, most tenured member, Wendy, since 2017, and the bulk of the other members of the current board came in 2019. Since then, we've basically gone broke. So that's one of my thoughts. Okay, that's it.
Great, thank you. Thanks again, both of you, for joining us. I want to start out with, Wendy, you mentioned your teacher in the Evergreen District. There was a strike that delayed the start of the school year. Vancouver has also faced difficult labor negotiations, has managed to avoid delaying school this year. What role does and should the board play in dealing with unions? And how has Vancouver managed to avoid Evergreens may comparatively? We'll start with.
Well, the board plays, I think, the most important role, because the board directs the district, right? So we set the expectations, but we also set the tone. And you're right, it was a challenging bargain this year with our classified staff, labor union. But I think that's reflective really of the budgetary challenges that we're facing. I think that those challenges aren't going to go anywhere. They're not going to go away anytime soon. They're going to continue to be challenging, if not even more difficult than they are today. But one of the reasons, I believe, that we were able to avoid a strike is because we have really worked hard, not just at the bargaining table, but between negotiations, right? Consistently working hard to build a collaborative working relationship with our labor partners, and really truly seeing them as partners and not adversaries. I think a lot of times districts and boards see labor unions as the opposition, rather than, I mean, they are our staff. They are the people that we trust to teach and care for our students. And as an employer, it's important to me that our staff are, they're in safe and supportive working environments, that they feel satisfied in their work, that they enjoy what they do, because they're going to be more productive and more effective if they are happy with where they're at. And so it's really important to just have those regular conversations, not just during bargaining, but consistently reaching out to your labor partners, asking them to provide input, asking for feedback, asking for like, here's what we're thinking of doing, how is this going to impact you, what potential pitfalls do you see, can we mitigate those or avoid those altogether? Just those constant conversations all year long, so that when you come to the bargaining table, you've already kind of dealt with a lot of the stuff that might have to be barged, that traditionally would be barged. And frankly, that was something that I felt was missing in the Vancouver School District. It's one of the reasons why I wanted to run, was because I felt like our district really needed that educator perspective and that labor union perspective, to say like, it doesn't have to be this way, it can be collaborative. And so I am very grateful to our staff that they didn't go on strike, but I also, we made a concerted effort to make sure that that continued to be a positive and productive bargaining process, even after, you know, their contract ended. And I get it, it's uncomfortable to work without a contract, right? That's asking a lot. But I feel like it's because we really worked hard to build that trust and relationship with them.
Right. Larry, from what you see in the Vancouver District, do they foster an effective relationship with labor?
I think the answer is yes. I think Vancouver School District has, in the county, the highest salaries for pretty much all the labor groups. And I think they worked hard to do that. I think the main difficulty that we have with negotiations is that it starts in March and April, before we really have data from the legislature on what our budget is. So our monies for whatever we compensate pay our labor groups to do the work of the schools, it comes from the state, the federal government, or the local taxpayers for enrichments for our local schools. And the state apportionment, once it's defined, that's what it is. We pretty much have to live with that budget, it's most of what we've got. The levies for enrichment are defined pretty much well in advance. We just ran a six-year levy for capital, technology, other operating costs, which kind of is now treated in the last two years as part of the general fund. So the levies are known for estimating six years out. We have one coming up next February. So I don't know what happened in the negotiating. I'd be very curious between the starting negotiation, March and April, and August 31st, when we didn't have a contract. Talking, you know, Burnaupkin, I'm talking to a member of the union that had just voted to authorize a strike, and now has a tentative agreement that they have to vote on and the board has to ratify. Their question was, there's nothing on the table, you know, the cupboards are empty, there's no money left. All the money that we have is committed to the programs that we want to have in the schools, so.
From your perspective...
So are we treating each other well? Yeah. I'm not sure that we're managing ourselves within the appropriations that we have.
And given that, do you think that the district in general is fiscally responsible? Do they put money in the right direction, or would you prefer to make some changes?
Six years ago, we had $36 million in reserves, roughly 10%. The year closed August 31st. Based on two years ago, we won't know what the end-of-year balance is till after the election. Wendy, do you know whether we're underwater?
I know that we are not.
Pardon?
I know that we're not, and I mean, I don't want to try and frame Harry, but I would like to respond to some of the things that he said. Well, first of all, thank you. With, I mean, just in reference to the bargaining process, it's very standard to start in May and April, that's very industry standard, right? And the reality is that there are things in every negotiation that are not, there's no dollars attached, there are working condition type things that you can negotiate before you have a final budget. And so it's nice to get some of those things out of the way before you start talking about dollars and cents, which are frankly the harder factors. So that's pretty common. And in March and April, you're not meeting daily, or even meeting in private. So it's a lose-lose start. But you're right, it doesn't necessarily, I mean, it tends to become more pressing the closer you get to the start of school, and you don't have a... When we set the budget for the year, we did build in some expectation around budgeting, budgeting for negotiations. So we did have that as part of our, as our budget when we passed, and we stayed within the parameters that we had set. So we were looking forward to the additional costs that negotiations might take. With regards to the end fund balance, frankly, 10% in reserved, in my opinion, is way too high. We're going to be ending, we're predicting, we expect to end this new year with about $250,000 in reserves, which is way too low. But...
This spring.
This come, the end of this year, yes. But we also made the very intentional decision to spend down our end fund balance so that we could maintain services possibly. And we have. To say that 10%, fund balances, like, the goal, right, is always by policy between 5% and 7%. So 10% is too high. And my argument that I have made as a board director is that we shouldn't be taking tax dollars from families and not spending it on kids, just holding it in reserve. And thankfully, we did have that healthy, very healthy reserve, because it did allow us to continue to provide services to students for longer when we started, like, the budget from the state has been less and less. So that was an intentional decision made by...
And I want to move on, and talking about the budget, Larry, what is the district's budget, do you know?
Yeah. You mean numbers?
Yeah.
I'd see that question to Wendy.
Well, no, that's why I'm asking you, to see if the challenger...
Ah, the challenger is aware that we spend about $420, $430 million a year for our 21,000 students, yes.
Interesting. That's a very budget.
It's more or less so.
With a couple of million.
Right, yeah.
And it's five different funds.
Don't need it down to the...
If we want to go into that detail.
But also along those lines, one common complaint that we hear from the public is that in any district, not just Vancouver, but that the administrators take up too big a portion of that. Do you think administrators in Vancouver are overpaid?
I think that's a strong man. I think that our current board is 60% educators. So I trust that over six years, they've come to an appropriate balance for administration, classified, and certified staff. If they haven't, I wouldn't have expected to hear something about it. So I think you can raise that as a sector of inequality, but there's been a lot of time to work on it with people who have expertise in it.
But Colin?
Do you have any concerns about school safety? Do you feel that Vancouver Public Schools facilities are safe for kids? If not, what would you like to do about it? And let's start with you.
I feel they're safe. There are always risks with any number, that number of people is, as I've been pointed out in large factories, that number of people, all sorts of things that happen in your community will happen in that microcosm. So there are risks. Are they safe and do we control the risks? I think the answer is yes. I suspect that we may go a little too far in locking down the schools and making them a completely separate bubble than the rest of the community. But that's an attempt to reduce risk. So do I think that we've reduced risks negatively for the schools? Yes. Are there opportunities to do more? Doubt it. And the security people at the schools are continuously working on them.
How do you feel about the sugar drills? That our congressional representative would like to have Washington essentially excused from the requirement that schools run drills for, you know, that there's a sugar in school? How do you feel about those?
It strikes me a bit as a one-size-fits-all. So each school, I think, and the district can determine where the risks are. So mandate and top-down, the entire country has to do this particular thing, I think that's probably inefficient.
Wendy, how about you? How do you feel about safety in general, and these sugar drills in particular?
Well, this is a personal question for me, right? Because I teach in a public high school, and I, my children attend our public schools, and so this is something that I take very personally. I think that, could we, there's a balance to be had between making our schools, you know, as Larry said, locking it down and making it feel very unlockable, and creating an environment that's not really conducive to learning. But I would also say there's a place for those drills. And it's not just, like, when we do a lockdown, or what's traditionally been called, referred to as a lockdown, it's a little bit more nuanced than that. There are different types of lockdowns. And so when we practice them in school, usually it's not the full-on scary version of the full lockdown, it's usually more of a modified. And we can continue teaching, but we all need to know what the procedures and protocols are. And I think that our families want to know that their students, their children, know the procedures and protocols are. We have had situations tragically, horribly in Vancouver. There was one several years ago where there was a shooting in the parking lot of my child's school. And that was terrifying, absolutely terrifying, those few moments where we knew that there had been a shooting at Sarah J. Henderson, but we didn't know where our kids were. So I absolutely understand the fear. I live with it every day in my job. Maybe this is the sound in the world, is the sound of that lockdown drill starting, especially when you're not expecting it. It's terrifying. But we also need to do what we can to take care of our students, and also make them feel that they are being taken care of. But there are other safety aspects beyond lockdown drills. So to answer your question directly about our representative wanting to eliminate them, I mean, that's just not something that's going to happen, right? Like, schools are still going to do it because we have an obligation to protect our students. And like I said, I think our families expect that. But balancing it with that terror at the same time, right? So be mindful of the impact that those drills can have to kids. Okay.
Good.
Did you know that was it? No.
Yeah, so regarding students using AI, artificial intelligence, Wendy, what do you, do you think it's a problem? And if so, what do you think, what more do we need to do about the issue?
I wish I had the magic answer with regards to AI, it's still so new. I feel like we are, we are kind of at the forefront of a paradigm shift, frankly, in education, with regards to all the AI. And I don't have the crystal ball to see how well that's going to go. I feel like there's definitely going to be some growing pains. Do I think it's a problem? I can tell you that, yes, my students use AI, it's very apparent when they do. They're not yet sophisticated users of it, but they will become sophisticated users of it. So I think it's important for schools to kind of lean into that a little bit, and really take the initiative in teaching our students, like, what are the appropriate uses, and teaching them the skills that you kind of need to use. And I'll be honest, I'm still a great kid, right? It's still so...
And I'm sorry, what do you teach?
I teach history and civics.
Okay, thanks, go ahead.
So, I mean, I don't know for sure how to answer that, because I think we're still in the figuring-it-out phase. But I also know that it's something that we really need to be actively looking on, because it's not going away, and it's advancing more rapidly than it would be.
Do you think there is, it has a place?
I think it potentially can have a place, yeah, for sure, as a tool. But to help our students develop those skills and foster their thinking, not to replace it, right? And so I think if you teach students how to use it, and how it can help them, and also the dangers of letting a student think important, right?
Are students being taught?
Oh, I would say not, not really, at least, no.
But when you say, when you catch a student using that...
I mean, right now, it's still early enough on that we can have those long, long conversations, and we can...
Do you think any policies need to be developed?
Yes, I think, yes, we should be working on that. But until we really, yeah, I was going to say, until we really have a better idea of what role we wanted to play, what role it can play. I mean, I think it'd be too early to draft a policy at this point.
Okay, where are you at? Yeah, there's a problem, you shouldn't have, so where are you putting your device?
So Mea culpa. So I spent 18 years at Intel making the brains for these devices. So, yeah, the AI is out of the bottle, and the students will learn to use them. On the plus side, you can hope that writer's block is a thing of the past, because your first draft can be delivered to you quite easily. Now, the students need to get past the first draft and start using it, and putting something of their own original thought in it. That's what we strive for in the schools, is for them to build the skills to generate original thoughts, and to do analysis. So if they just use it as a tool to provide an answer to some exercise that, whose only value to them is to build their capabilities, then it's a problem for their teaching staff and their assessors. To the students, it should be a great tool to get rid of writer's block. It's a problem now. A problem? I think the problem would be the transition from not having it to having it, or in transitional fits. So I'm sure there are places where it's not going well. And more than that, the students are actually not putting any effort into it.
Okay. What are your thoughts around schools' policy around cell phones, having it locked up?
Well, my personal feeling, and this is just a personal feeling, that the policy is fine, which is, I think the teacher in the classroom should own, that the administration should back the teacher.
Do you think it's the same with AI and policy with that, too?
Yeah.
Think about cell phones.
Cell phones? Well, I was a very strong supporter of the policy that we passed. I think that it was too longcoming, frankly. And so, and I can tell you from my experience, where we have a similar policy that I teach under, it's not exactly the same, but it's very similar, the start of the school year has been night and day different than the past few years. So just have been the first couple of weeks, I'm seeing the benefits of this policy, and students, you know, coming out of COVID, one of the struggles that we have been dealing with, with our students, is their interpersonal skills have really lacking development, and so getting them to even talk to each other and engage in discussion was really, really, really difficult. And honestly, in the first two weeks, like, I've had no problems with getting students engaged, involved, working together. It's been pretty amazing, actually.
Do you think the current cellphone policy is as good as it needs to be, or do you think...
I think that we're always constantly, the education is constantly striving for improvement, so do I think it'll, it's the end-all-be-all? No, I think we will tweak it, but, you know...
Do you think it'll evolve a little?
Oh, for sure, yeah.
Wait, in Vancouver, why was the policy so longcoming?
Well, we had a policy in place, but it was outdated. It didn't really directly reference smartphones or the current technology. But it was a, it was a pretty broad policy. It wasn't as nuanced as we really needed it to be. So when we decided to go in a different direction, we wanted to make sure, and this is true for any big significant changes that we do in the district, we wanted to ensure that we were engaging our families, our students, our labor partners, our community members, so that when we crafted a policy, it was going to be one that was supported. So we have buy-in, because a policy is only as good as its implementation. And that process takes time, right? Soliciting that feedback, we have focus group meetings, we had surveys that were sent out, we had, like, so we did a lot of work, and we wanted to make sure that we crafted a policy that was going to be effective. So we just, we made very careful steps in that process. But it's also the advantage of that is always working to engage the community and involve the community, and that connection with our community too, so we're not...
Going back to the question about AI, Larry, what changes would you like to see in, generally in the curriculum within Vancouver Schools? Would you be looking like sweeping dictates, or do you think they're on the right track?
As a school director?
Yeah.
The curriculum is set by the curriculum committee, and a whole bunch of experts on what materials are the best for schools, and for individual classrooms, as Wendy well knows. So the involvement of directors in setting curriculum is not quite limited, and I think that's appropriate. I think that it's worthwhile asking whether the curriculum serves our more general vision, and there, I think, we might have some opportunity for improvement. But that's not a specific curriculum idea. So I think it would be worthwhile asking, what is it about the curriculum that is associated with a significant gap in our current assessments of academic success relative to what they were six years ago? Because they have degraded, and they have not recovered in the last few years. And as Wendy pointed out, after 2019, as our enrollment started to go down, our funding in the state started to drop, we kept our headcount of the staff constant. And people were coming and going, but the total number of employees was kept exactly the same. You know, we lost five percent, actually, it's maybe seven percent of the students at any one time. So the staff were there. Wendy wasn't. We might want to look at the curriculum and see if the curriculum really supports what we're trying to do academically. So is that a sweeping change by a director of the state? No, I'm not the expert.
Why do you think test scores have declined? And it's not just Vancouver.
I, the entire state, yeah. So why have they declined? I'd be guessing, I think that Wendy would know better than I would.
So Wendy, are you pleased with the curriculum, the direction of that? Should there be changes, and why have test scores declined?
I'm going to say it again, we're constantly striving for improvement, so we're constantly reviewing our curriculum to make sure that it's meeting our needs, our students' needs, our staff needs. You reckon that the board doesn't directly sit down and choose textbooks? But it is important that the board sets the direction for the district, and one of the important steps in that process is making sure that our staff has an opportunity to try and give a curriculum, some pilot different curriculums, before we make a district-wide adoption, to make sure it's actually effective. And we do that. And we do have a regular calendar, multi-year calendar, where we review curriculum and the resources. With regards to test scores... Um, with regards to test scores, I can tell you that um the most significant change that happened in between twenty nineteen and twenty twenty was that Washington State stopped using test scores as a graduation requirement. So before that, the S back scores um for high school students affected graduation rates. And so students were a little bit more unsympathized to, to do their best. Um, and I will tell you, uh, as a high school teacher who has had, who has administered state tests, some students get in more seriously than others. Um, and so you know, when you, when you take away the, the consequence of that test, um you're naturally going to have a drop in test scores. And we saw it immediately. Um, as soon as that change was made. Now, I will tell you, I agree with that decision. I don't think we should be basing graduation on a single test score. Any teacher will tell you that you never based anything on a single test score. Um, so I, that was the right move, but those test scores do not necessarily reflect what our students are able to do. And I would also say that the S back test that is administered at the tenth grade, because it does continue to be one of multiple graduation pathways that students can meet uh or can be used to demonstrate they are ready to move on from high school. They're ready to graduate. Um, so we administer at the tenth grade level um so that we can administer it again at the eleventh grade level if needed. Um, those tests, especially um the math test, which is the lower of the, the three statewide tests that we give to our high schoolers. Um, that covers geometry and algebra two, which most tenth graders are still, most tenth graders are still taking geometry and they're tested before they finish the course. Um, and it also covers content that they haven't. Um, so those S back maths, math scores are actually used to determine college readiness. Um, and we have like thirty, forty percent of our students who are showing college readiness for math, which like at tenth grade, which actually is pretty good. Um, so it's important to understand the context of those scores and what they're really showing us. Um, it's easy to point to one number on a page and, and say that's not good enough. Um, and it's not because we should always be striving for improvement, but uh but there is some nuance to that number. There's a story behind it, but it's important to.
Uh, do you think the state legislature is serving public education as well as it could? If not, what do you think the legislature should be doing differently where public schools are concerned, if anything? And if you would like to see changes, what role would a school board have in that? So Larry, let's start with you.
I think most of what the state legislature does to support school districts is good. Uh, I think that two years ago, you asked about culture wars. Uh, and sadly, we've, we've had a series of things that have come out of the legislature that are like that, that come with support from one party. Uh, and they get dumped into a bunch of uh changes to the law, which turn into procedures for the schools, policies for the schools, which turn into procedures that are based on things that are ideological and really in the best interests of the students.
Be an example.
Uh, the bounce back and forth on the parental rights activities. So we had a fairly conservative position come out of the initiative process. And now we've swung the other way with what came out of the legislature is House Bill twelve ninety-six. Uh, both of those generated policy changes that I don't think are in the, the interests of the students. Um, so that part, if they could tone it down, that would be nice. Um, I think as far as uh what they have done, the amount of detail that has ended up in the revised code of Washington on the schools to follow, I think is um too much. I think that they've taken a lot of control of what happens in school and to direct it from the legislature. And I, I personally think that they are driving a little too close to partisan control of schools. Um, I'd rather see Wendy in charge than the legislature on a lot of the detail.
What about like, financially, you have it, that is a big part of your platform is talking about funding and how resources are allocated. Do you feel the legislature has followed and kept its uh responsibility where the state McCleary decision is concerned, where funded, the school funded?
I think we've had a huge increase in the amount of funding. Um, frankly, that's significant change in the inflation rate. So whether, are we keeping keeping even with the rest of the spending within the community? Um, are we that autonomous to say? Um, the job of the legislature is to balance all of the spending priorities they have. They've got transportation, they've got uh policing, they've got healthcare, and all sorts of things in addition to schools. So.
Like, but education is, according to state constitution, their top price, their top priority.
Providing a simple education, a basic education is their paramount duty according to Article nine. There are a few other articles that go before that. Article nine says, a basic education. Uh, we can ask whether we're going to pass that or not, but I think that the numbers that they give have to be matched to the words that they give us and put together beside, this is what our legislature has said we have to operate with.
Wendy, how about you? How do you feel about the state's responsibilities and obligations to public education?
Um, with regards to, to um with regards to policies, I think that uh our, our state is very supportive of the first overall. Um, with regards to amply funding basic education, I think we have failed. Uh, and I think that it enlarged, I, I'm going to be really careful because it's too easy for me to get into the weeds and then go off on the tangents on like the tax structure for Washington State and whether it's not appropriate, but um with regards to basic education funding and the McCleary um uh decision, the, the courts left it up to the, the legislature to determine what the definition of basic education is. And they have relied, continued to rely on the prototypical model where um you know, the, the state says this is what a typical elementary school should have, this is what a typical middle school should have, typical high school should have um in terms of student body FTE, but also staffing ratios. Um, and those models that they rely on for funding are during another century, I think, in terms of like what schools actually look like and what they actually do today in twenty twenty-five. Um, so they, you know, they, they fund a fraction of the nurses that we need. They fund a fraction of our librarians. They fund a infinitesimal fraction for security and air educators and um so those are things that we need, right? Those are school, those are things that our, our community expects to have at their child's school. They expect to have unmerch, they expect to have the security playground monitors, they expect to have these, these people working with their children and taking care of them and serving them and, and, and keeping them safe. But the prototypical model does not fully fund those needs. Uh, so we use that enough to, to fill in those gaps, right? Um, so no, I think we need to, to answer the last part of your question, what, what could we do differently? We could change the prototypical model so it's actually reflective of the twenty-first century. Um, but it I could, I honestly could talk for hours on this particular topic and I could go on a rant, but um it's incredibly frustrating and those are the, the constraints that we operate within when we are, when we crack our budgets. And it's hard because um so much of our budget does go to staffing costs. But every single one of those students, Larry referenced, the number of staff hasn't gone down, even though student enrollment has gone down. First of all, it's not a one-to-one ratio, like fewer students is not necessarily a new capital position, um, because it's not a one-to-one student ratio, staff ratio. Uh, but every single one of the, the staff that we have provides service to our students. Every single one of them creates a better learning environment, um creates a safer learning environment. And so when we cut those positions, it is, those are heart wrenching decisions that we have to make. Um, and so, I mean, I would just say that one of the reasons why I'm grateful to be on the board is to be able to provide that, that educator perspective and say like, this when we look at what we're going to cut, what could I, as a classroom teacher, go without for a day versus a month or even maybe a year, right? And making sure that we're still just getting every, every possible set of value out of every dollar that we spend on our students and making sure that that we're protecting those um, the most uh significant impacts if we cut those things and protecting those as much as we possibly can. Unfortunately, we've cut the things that we can go without a year, right? And now we're looking at, well, what can we do without for maybe a month or two? Like, what can we do? Like, and we, and eventually we're going to get down to the well, that, that's going to affect my day to day in a very real way. That's going to affect my students' learning in a very significant way. Um, so it's frustrating because that's where we're going in terms of our budget decisions. And it is incredibly difficult to make those decisions. Um.
Yeah, I, I, I'm sorry. No, I'm sorry. And I wanted to follow up on that and, and Larry, what you said earlier, uh, um, if enrollment declines, but staffing has remained the same, would you advocate for reducing staff in order to save money?
Not to save money. I think you need to right-size the schools. We have one of the larger districts in the state. So we have twenty-one thousand students. The concept that we can't adjust our staffing to stay reasonably close to a prototypical model is that means that no one can execute a prototypical model. I don't accept that. I don't accept that you can't strive towards it. I'd also point out the prototypical model is from another century, another millennium. And uh, as is my case with child education. Uh, and the legislature has revised that many times. And we had many adjustments to the current typical model for small schools, for schools with different uh cost of living in that area. There are a lot of different adjustments that have been committed to try to make that fit more accurately, what the schools need to do with the provided basic training.
Um, the uh throughout not only Vancouver, but throughout the country, uh, public school enrollment has dropped. Um, even as a, a percentage, more people are, are sending their kids elsewhere. Why is that? What should public schools do to combat that?
Why is that? Is it is the first question and by this is the second one. So the number of students enrolled in the public schools has gone down in Washington State. We're, we think about average across the state. About four or five percent. Um, the number of students that have gone into private schools, you know, about one percent. Which more of the students were there still. Uh, and the superintendent of public instruction does keep track of that. And I'm sure that number is active. Um, for the homeschooling, we are supposed to register. Uh, we should know. Um, and then there's the question of migration now. Uh, and this superintendent should have data on migration. We should have data on migration. No one in our district or our state educational group talked about migration. Um, so why is that? I don't know. I suspect that it's mostly migration deltas. There are fewer people with students coming into the district than there are leaving.
Uh, Wendy, what do you think? Is that accurate? The public school enrollment has dropped and that more parents are choosing to educate their kids outside the public school?
Um, I don't, I, I, I'll be honest. I don't, I don't know if that's, I mean, we, 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 the reality is that families are smaller, people are not having as many kids. And we, and we knew that actually when we were looking um before COVID, um, everybody wants to point to COVID as a drop, and that certainly was um part of the, the, it exacerbated it for sure. But even before COVID, you know, we work with geographers all the time. Um, and um, our geographer is telling us years before COVID that there was going to be a decline and, and, and during this time period. So um, and, and a fairly significant one. So it, it's not all that surprising, honestly. Um, although we did see a significant drop during COVID and it's been a very slow um return for some of our families. Um, uh, Larry referenced migration in and out, and the reality is that a lot of our students are transitory, they're, they're, they're facing homelessness. Um, and so their, their home may change three or four times over the course of a school year. And that might be going from one location within our boundaries to another location within our boundaries. It could be going to another location outside of our boundaries. Um, and the other reality too is that we live in a our, our district is a, is a very well-developed district. It's, and it's got a high cost of living. And so um families are moving to places like Richmond, which is virtually at the seams, right? Um, they're moving to places where housing is cheap. Uh, and so I think that is also kind of contributing to.
Larry, who are the five biggest backers for your campaign?
Me, my wife, and the rest of my family.
Is there anyone else?
Uh, no, not significantly.
Give, give me a quote.
Um, I'll pass on that.
Really?
Well, there's, it's a small campaign. So there's, there's no back for over a hundred dollars. It's okay. Side term, my wife.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Same question. Come on.
Um, I, when you say backers, are you talking about financially or endorsements as well? Um, okay, so um primarily myself, my husband, my household, uh, but I have received some, a couple of endorsement checks from uh WEA, Washington Education Association. Um, and uh which represents our teachers and our classified staff. And then also um IBW, which is under thirty. Oh, no, I'm sorry. It's not IBW. The Southwest Washington, which IBW.
Does WEA represent classified staff?
The Bayos flavor, you mean, is what you're.
Um, uh, how do you i- i- let's say that you're moving into an area, you aren't really familiar with the schools. How do you judge from looking down? How do you assess what makes a good school this way? What, how do you measure that? What metrics do you look at?
You mean, if I had school-aged children and I was traveling to Vancouver, what would I look at? I'd look first at the academic scores. Uh, I'd look at um the opportunity for enrichment past basic education. I'd look at the engagement and training of the faculty uh in the staff. So that was my last exercise was, what does the staff teach? What opportunities are there for enrichment past basic education? And how well do they execute for the students of that?
Thank you, Wendy. How do you assess this?
Um, I mean, you have the, the, the concrete data points that you can look at for sure. Um, but I, I can mention at the beginning, when my husband and I were buying our, our family home, we made the intentional decision to buy it in the Vancouver's district. Um, and we made that decision because, I mean, it was not a competition. I worked for another district, but it was a competition and I wanted my kids to go to Vancouver's schools. Um, and the reason for that was um the programs that were available, um like the dual language programs and then wide variety of programs of choice that we provide our students. Um, there's opportunities uh beyond basic education, but also I wanted them to go to a district that um is uh just really has a strong um community and a strong sense of community. Uh, and, and our district does. I'm very proud of that. Um, Vancouver is a very welcoming place and our schools are very welcoming places. And that's a high priority for not just me, but all everyone. Um, we want our students to love their students. They want, we want our teachers to love their students. We want everyone to be very happy. Um, and I feel like we, we do a good. Um, I will say that um when I ran for their board originally, um, I ran because I was not one hundred percent satisfied with what I was seeing happening at the district level. Um, and so one of the things that I really wanted to see improved upon was transparency. Um, and we have, um, I would all, I also wanted to see really genuine, meaningful community involvement and community engagement, not performative, but truly um a, a district that really listens to their community and values that feedback and that, but we, we truly do. Um, and I really wanted it to be a district of integrity. And I am very proud to say, I, I feel like we are that we have, we've really grown a lot in these accidents.
Uh, great. We'll move on then. Uh, give us your final pitch for why voters should support you and uh, I think you mentioned some endorsements. Feel free to, to mention any additional notable. And uh, I think you mentioned some endorsements. Feel free to, to mention any additional notable endorsements. We'll start with Wendy. Give us your final pitch.
Um, well, like I, I mean, I just kind of did a little bit, but um, I'm, I'm really proud of the work that I've done since I joined the board. It's a very different district than it was eight years ago. Uh, and I'm eager to continue that work. I think we are, um, it's funny because I was thinking about the same process four years ago when I ran for reelection four years ago. And I remember having, I was right in the middle of COVID and having conversations about um, the impacts of, what the impacts are going to be, kind of trying to predict in the forward. And I remember saying that it's going to be years before we really truly come out of this. And I feel like that's where we're at right now. Like, we, we finally have kind of recovered from those COVID years. And so I feel like we're on the cusp, a lot of changes, a lot of challenges, but also a lot of opportunities. Um, and so I'm eager to work with a new superintendent and eager to continue being part of the process of choosing a new superintendent um, and, and looking for, um, what is the vision for Vancouver for the next five, 10 years? This is, it's serving on the school board, being an educator. This is my life's, it's my passion. I love it and I really hope it continues to do that.
Great, thank you. Larry? Give us your final pitch.
Final pitch? Well, I think a lot of the things that the district does, they do very well. And the schools have taught us a wonderful addition and they continue to function. Uh, the dual language program also, I think is very good. I disagree with Wendy on not having reserves. I think that there's a real problem with our district running paycheck to paycheck. We can't take advantage of opportunities and we can't respond other than laying people off when in shortfalls. Uh, and I think that's uh, somewhere we should avoid. I think that the district needs to define what reserves are for. Not so, that's a board job to define what the reserves will be used for. And I think that that needs to go into the levies because the state is not going to give us money to generate reserves. For outgoing superintendents, Superintendent Snell left one thing for the district to do on the board, and that was develop the cash reserves. And there's not so many communications from the board right now. It indicates that we're going to do that. I think that our levy, which is going to come up for a vote in February of next year, needs to say what the reserves have to be and how we're going to build them. And right now, sadly, that would be at the expense of the other things that we have committed money for. But I think we have to do that. So, yeah, that's one change I think we, uh, on the transparency side, I might disagree slightly with Wendy. Uh, in the last two years since I ran for this position two years ago, as we were heading off the physical cliff. Now we're at the bottom of the physical cliff, not even underwater yet, but I think we will. There's been one no vote in a school board meeting. One. The board votes and say, wow, there are no decisions that are made and the school board made it. The public meeting doesn't show for it. It's theater. And the only one no vote was for an appointment of a person to a board position. It was not to a policy or a function of the board or the district. So I think a little more openness about what our choices are and definition of how we're going to raise money and what is important. So I think the board should be far more involved in the generation of the levy wording. All of the past levies have said things like, we may use the money for this, we might use the money for this, we could use the money for that. It's very little commitment about what we're going to do. And it ends up just being a fund for the administration to plug holes for.
Great, well, thank you. Thanks to both of you.
Thank you very much.